So we have forum, so I'll call this meeting the planning board to order. And wanted to have, before we start with the agenda items, wanted to have, because we have people on Zoom who wouldn't be able to see, and I don't know, I don't think they can see these cards, so we may want to direct these toward the folks who are here in person. Any cards? Thanks. But wanted to have us all identify who we are, just so people in the public who are attending via Zoom. So I'm George Thormses, and I'm Chair of the Planning Board.
And my name is Sarah Robinson. I'm a member.
Eric Tuaro, Director of Planning and Development.
Amy McMahon, soon to be an alternate on the planning board.
Chuck, any member?
And actually Vice.
And Vice Chair.
And just to be clear, Amy, as I was just saying just before we started, you're still officially a full member, so don't need to be elevated for the purpose of voting in this meeting. Great. So the, before we get into our agenda, I just want to give a little bit of orientation. This is our first hybrid meeting, which I think is great, because it gives wider access to people to attend and participate. And I wanted to give a little primer about open meeting law. Any member of the public is able to attend all public meetings per open meeting law, except for executive sessions. And there were particular guidelines and restrictions about when the executive session can be used. So attendance is guaranteed for members of the public. Participation is a different matter. Participation in a public hearing is something that is guaranteed. And this evening, we have a public hearing on some proposed zoning amendments. And so that's the, for folks who are in person, that's what the sign up sheet is about. And we're gonna, we don't have a option for people to sign in via chat at the moment, but I'll just make sure that anyone who was attending remotely has a chance to indicate they want to participate in that. And but it's different if it's a, it's not a public hearing. Then it's at the chair's discretion about participation of members of the public. And there has been a legacy. Charles Roberts, who was longtime chair prior to this, did a lot of flexibility about participation of members of the public in this, and so tried to carry on that.
But there's a new chair in town.
Have tried to carry on that legacy of being open to public participation, and have found it helpful at times. And, and obviously, attendance and participation are contingent upon a reasonable level of respect for others and for the process. So I just wanted, and also mention, I should have said this first, but this meeting is being recorded, and any is, if anyone else is recording it, they just need to notify me at this time. Is anybody online recording? Let me know. Okay, thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes of February 1st. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes.
For a second, thank you. Discussion.
There's a small typo on page three. In the first line, I believe it should say, Director Tuaro recommended to the board that they wait to re-initiate. It says re-imitate, so just a typo.
It's always fixed up somebody from the legal profession.
And I had one thing at the bottom of page one. It's an initial motion to, for the board to endorse the A and R plan. And then the second motion wouldn't be for me to endorse it, but me to sign the A and R. Replace minor technicality, just replace endorsement sign. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, all in favor with those adjustments? All right, very good. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments. And there were six proposed zoning amendments. Five of these were initiated by the planning board, and one was initiated by a citizen petition. And so we'll, how did we do this last time? We just go through one at a time, I assume that makes the most sense. Okay. So, or, well, if someone wants to, do we want, just for efficiency sake, if anyone wants to speak to them, just speak to whatever ones they want? So it goes by speaker, does that make the most sense? I don't know, what's easier for you, for record?
I would say that you just go through, one through.
Okay, and see if the people have comments on each one?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so start with the signups of people who are here. Al Norman, you want to?
Are we doing, George, are we doing them one at a time, or are we doing?
Yes, gonna go one at a time. Do you have particulars, one you, or ones you want to comment on?
Yeah, but the, I think it's the sixth, the citizen petition.
It is the sixth, yeah. Okay, so let me just, before we get to that, sorry, thank you for patience. So we'll start with farm poultry definition. There was a proposal to amend that. Is there anyone here? There are three people signed up here. Al, Mr. Spite? Thank you, and Gary Selden. Did any of you want to comment on that issue, the farm poultry definition? Is there anyone participating remotely who wants to participate, or I'm sorry, comment on that? The definition of farm, comma, poultry? No, okay. The next is dwelling, three-family dwelling. Is there anyone who has signed up here, wants to comment on that? Is there anyone remote wants to comment on that zoning, proposed zoning amendment? No. The next is about the marijuana establishments. Anyone here? Anyone participating remotely want to comment on that? Hearing none. The next one was on sign regulations? And anyone want to comment on that who's virtual? And the next one is on the water supply protection district. Okay, we're now to the, I think I got them all, Eric, right? The first five?
I only have four here.
Well, farm poultry, dwelling, three-family, marijuana establishments.
Signs?
Yeah, I said signs.
You said signs.
Thank you. Okay, so the major development review. And Al, your first one here, you, oh, thank you. If you could state your name and address. Thank you.
Member of the board, for the record, my name is Al Norman, Grinnell Street in Greenfield. I want to talk about a citizen petition that was introduced because the city council voted on this same, similar wording at its January meeting, after receiving completely erroneous information that if they didn't vote on it, it would be automatically passed. That was information portrayed by the mayor and several other people on the council. It was all wrong. That is not what chapter 48 says. So I'm, we filed a petition to get it back into play, because fortunately, the planning board had supported it on its way to the board, and as a result, it could come back in less than two years, because the planning board was supportive. And I wanted to remind you that the planning board has voted in favor of this at least three times in the past. This most recent experience began last August, when the Economic Development Committee submitted a proposal to lower the number of car trips from 3,000 to 2,000. And that, that was never, never debated on for month after month after month. So this is, this goes back almost six or seven months. I want to begin by just saying that the, the purpose of the major development review is something that people in this town don't understand. The, the purpose is to look at potential uses that have an impact on the environment, abutting properties, town services, traffic patterns, on the public health and safety, and this is the most important part, for the purposes of mitigation. In my experience of going back 30 years, I don't recall a single MDR proposal that was denied by the town of Greenfield, the city of Greenfield. And so I think people don't understand, they think the MDR is to stop development. That's absolutely not what happens with that project. The MDR is flexible enough to allow a project like the Walmart, 135,000. It was big enough to allow something like that to wiggle through. So I don't want people to think that I'm here because I'm against business, or I think that I'm against whatever people want to say about it. All these are MDR. It's about, it's about the issue of what's best for the town, and how to make it better. So for the past 25 years, particularly on this traffic issue, Greenfield had a MDR that if you generated more than 500, 500 car trips daily, that you had to have an MDR. Now, that wasn't in play for 25 years. Nothing awful happened in this town and city of Greenfield, nothing. Then in 2016, the city council doubled that to 1,000 car trips. And then again in 2019, it was raised to 3,000. Why? Because it was part of a vote swap between a library and economic environmental protection. There was one councillor who said, I will vote for the library if you weaken the major development review. That vote swap was what resulted in a very quick decision by the city council to raise it to 3,000. And the city council was asked at the time, the president was asked, why 3,000? The city council president said, well, I have to tell you, there is no evidence-based study that came up with that number. It has no backing for it. But they voted for it, because if they didn't vote for it, they would have lost their ninth vote for a library, which would have killed the library. So as a result, it has been, has gone from 500 to 3,000, with no real evidence-based reason about why it should be there. And the state of Massachusetts uses 2,000. MEPA uses 2,000 car trips. So we are recommending that it go to 2,000. I think that's low, frankly, I think for what, what actually, it should be lower. We, I'd rather go to 1,000, but 2,000 is fine. You know, it's not as good as it should be, but based on the fact that you will have a second proposal tonight that comes in under, actually, under 3,000, but over 2,000. You've got one tonight, Starbucks. So this will be the second retail project to come along in the last seven months that would have had an MDR. And MDRs are not punishment, they are not stringent. They get questions answered from developers, since we can't ask them directly. So basically, that's it. I'm, I'm saying that I hope you will again, with a strong voice, tell the city council, this is, this is good land use planning, because the last time the, the planning board said to the city council, this is not land use planning, this is something that was done under duress for another reason. So I'm hoping that the planning board will, will stay with its decisions for at least three times in the past, and, and recommend this positively to the city council. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's a hand up by Philip Elmer.
Okay, I wanted to go with, I called the folks who were here.
Okay.
Yeah, I take it, Phil, you want to comment on this?
Yes, but I can wait.
Okay.
I can wait.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mitch, I don't want to try your last name again, I'm sorry. Spade, oh, that's easy, okay, thank you. Yeah, we just give again, your address.
Mitch Spade, Highland Avenue. And I'm pro-business also for Greenfield. But the MDR, I think you're giving these entities that are coming in a free pass, actually, at the 3,000 level threshold. I personally would like to see it at 1,000. The impact that you're gonna have in that area is, it's gonna be phenomenal. I, I like to bike, take advantage of the borrowed landscape out in that area. And that's not gonna be achievable, once this, once this development come in. I can guarantee you that. Also, I think we need to be looking at, there's quite a few square, quite a bit of square footage. I call it uptown. You guys call it downtown. And I think we need to be looking at that, and how to develop that and get the most use out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gary Selden?
Hello, Gary Selden, for our report. I'm very glad for the part of the time that I've lived in Greenfield that we've had an MDR. I think it's a needed part of our civic engagement, community engagement with the economy. Al spoke to the notion that wanting the MDR point to be lower might be thought of as being anti-business. I can understand that outlook, but no, I have a, for myself, I have a high respect for people that put their money forward to open a business. Amy, that's part of what I respect about you. George, you and I have done that cooperatively, as members and owners of our cooperative. It's not a, not something that I take lightly. Given that, why, why 500? Why did we start there? Why are we at 3,000 now? What, what should it be at? I really appreciated Chuck Green's approach to being a candidate for accessory. He presented a lot of data. So I'm wondering what, what the data is in terms of, since we've had an MDR, how many, how many businesses have been required to fill the requirements of them, the MDR, the review? And how many are not? And I know, I don't, I'm not, the, I'm not gonna go and do this research. I tip my hat to Chuck Green who did the research. Maybe one of you wants to do the research and know the information, how many businesses have, haven't, would have. I know the would have would be more of a guess. But that would be interesting information for me. And I guess I would echo some of the previous comments. I don't really recall there being problems in the years when it was 500. I understand that this proposal is prob, well, I don't, I haven't really studied deep down on the process to know whether we're locked into changing this number. I bet that for this petition, it's only 2,000 uptown. But I, I'd like to see the number lower, 500 or 1,000 places we've already been seem appropriate to me. Thanks for your attention. Thanks for your service. And that's, that's not a throwaway comment from me. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well, good to Zoom, and Mr. Omer, then we'll come back to see if anyone else here. Mr. Elmer?
Hi, thank you, thanks for having me. Since I wrote the original proposal.
If you could just, sorry, give your address, name and address, thanks.
Oh, Philip Elmer, Chestnut Hill in Greenfield. I wrote the original proposal, I'm sorry that it got hung up. I think it was a good idea. That vote swap, actually, for the library, for the MDR, was, was the thing that got me interested in joining the council. It was so blatantly unreasonable and illogical, that I, I didn't really understand what it meant. I got a vague sense that it took some of the authority away from the planning board. Four years later, I have a much better sense of what raising the MDR level, the number, the amount of traffic in the, that triggers an MDR, I know what that means. And I think, if I can summarize, I think that the, the citizens of Greenfield count on the planning board to make reasonable decisions about what should go forward and what shouldn't. And the way the MDR got raised took that decision-making process out of your hands. I'd like to put it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom who's participating remotely, who wants to offer some input on this proposed amendment on the MDR? Some people are there by phone, so I don't know if you can raise a virtual hand, so feel free to speak up. Oh, yes.
Hi, George.
Uh, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. This is Stephanie DuGloz, Chapman Street, Greenfield.
Thank you.
I do support a lower number threshold, especially with a lot of the new developments. We see an incredibly increased amount of traffic on Chapman Street, because there has been unchecked prior developments on how much traffic diverted from Main Street would create on those side cutoff roads. So I'm calling to say that I, I am for more overview on traffic impact and, and public impact of these developments. And as far as being, I'm not anti-business at all, but sometimes some of these decisions, we need to be a little bit pro-resident and pro-taxpayer. And some oversight needs to happen. So I support a lower number than the 3,000. I can't believe this number went back and forth on a swap for a vote. But that's the past. So on average, if a car goes by your street, you got 1,440 if one's one a minute. So I would like to see it closer to about 1,000 on the side street, or on a main thorough way, like Main Street, Federal Street, and a little, maybe a little higher on the outskirts. That's my own opinion, but thank you for letting me speak.
Uh, well, thank you for speaking, Stephanie. It's not, we're not doing your, this is your right to speak here, so thank you for offering your input. Is there anybody else here who wants to speak to this particular issue of the MDR proposed zoning amendment?
Can you make it any louder?
What, make that louder? I don't know. That first not?
George, I have a question just came to mind, I wasn't planning on saying.
Yeah, do you want to come up here?
Okay, make it out.
Okay.
It's really, it's not.
I think that will be more audible to folks who are, thank you, and just naming.
Yeah, of course. Hi, John Garrett, I live on Hope Street. So the question I just wanted to ask, as far as the traffic numbers we're citing, when are those calculated and by who? So if a business wanted to move into Greenfield, are they basically gonna have to know, like, okay, this is a city that needs us to know exactly the traffic count we're gonna be generating? Is that part of the standard process, basically, when anybody's looking to build anything in a city that's commercial? And so just really kind of a logistical question is what I was asking, less of a comment and more of clarification. So I don't know if anyone can speak to that, but.
Eric, do you want to, in a moment, just answer that question about what's expected of?
Thanks, thank you. Both site plan review and special permits, which includes site plan review. So anytime there's a special permit application, it also is for site plan review. Part of the requirements is to submit a traffic statement on the impacts of traffic from the proposed development. So yes, it's required, in all cases, site plan review and special permits.
Thank you very much.
Any last comments on this? Hi, was that someone else wanted to offer some input about the MDR proposed zoning amendment? No? Okay, last call? All right. Remind me, Eric, do we take a board vote to close the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion, since we've heard everything someone said?
I move to close the public hearing.
All board members in favor? So just to let folks know, who hadn't seen our agenda for tonight, we do have, after another agenda, and we have a site plan review coming up. And then after that, we are planning this evening to deliberate on that zoning, proposed zoning amendment, and the other five that I mentioned. So I'm anticipating we'll probably have a, we would make a recommendation to the council by the end of this meeting.
Do we need to do it in that order?
Well, we're, we're, according to our agenda, we're on to the site plan review, and I just want to check if we have a, you know, out of respect for whoever would be representing, this is the application for Starbucks, for the property located at 200 Mohawk Trail. So I didn't know if we have someone here, Eric.
Yeah, are going to participate remotely, virtually? And I believe I see people on there that are relative to that, Carolyn Armstrong.
Okay, thanks. So in answer, thank you, Eric. So in answer to your questions, my, my thought would be that we disrespect the order of the agenda, just because we're, that's what we put up there. Okay, so we're on to that agenda item. So we have, if folks who are part of that proposal could identify themselves and their roles, that'd be great.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Armstrong. I'm here with Kim Lee Horton Associates for the proposal for the site plan review of the addition of a, the Starbucks lot at 200 Mohawk Trail. In this proposed plan that was presented to the board, it includes an update for a 14-car stack with room for overflow. It updates the flow in and out of the site, and includes a little bit of retrofit to the existing site to update it, make it look nicer, bring it up to the code for what Starbucks looks for. And then also, an addition of the update to the trash enclosure as well. And then I'm with Kim Lee Horton Associates, where our address is located at 271 Waverly Oaks Road in Wall fam. I really forgot to say that in the beginning.
And are you, Carolyn, the only one who was participating directly this evening?
I also have Bill Scully on, he's in with, on the phone as well, so I can have him speak up. He's here because he helped produce the traffic statement that we provided.
Thank you. Before we go into your presentation, I just wanted to offer a preface on this proposal. The traffic study, which is often the, the crux of these kind of developments, was just sent out to the board this morning. I, I can't speak for the other board members. I know I happen to be off work today, but I had other obligations. I've had very little time to absorb or assess that study. So I just wanted to mention that for the board, and, and for your benefit, and the public. And I don't know if other board members have commented on that, and we'll just proceed and talk, address that later. But I just wanted to give that context for, I'm coming to this, myself coming to this process.
Absolutely. Do you want me to go ahead and start, and I can give a little bit of overview of the project?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Please, I'm sorry, yes, I just wanted to start off with that, just, you had that awareness of that, thank you.
Absolutely. So I can go ahead and start a little bit with just the project itself. And then also let me know if you have a screen sharing capability, and I can show that as well, just so that everyone can look at the same thing at the same time.
Eric's saying we do have that capacity, yep.
Okay.
You need.
I don't think I have access to it. It allowed me to unmute and show the video, but I'm not showing up on here.
This is our first hybrid meeting.
Very exciting, I appreciate it. Who's, access to everyone? And if not, I can still talk through it.
I made you a co-host, see if you can share now.
Okay. Oh, yes, I can.
Great, nice.
Perfect. So here is the existing site, we're actually not, can you guys see it?
We're not seeing it.
Here it comes.
We see it.
Excellent, thank you.
So here is the existing site. As part of the Seminole, we included the existing and then the proposed conditions. So for here, most of the site is actually not being updated too much. And the proposed condition, all we're, and the main things that we are looking at doing is adding an additional landscape island to help to extend the car length of the queue, to provide for a longer car length. It already provides 14, a 14-car queue, and then it has the capacity for a lot more as well. Normally, we don't see much more than like 10 on a site like this, but we always want to provide as much as possible, just to ease concerns and everything. And then it also provides, just like an update for like the trash enclosure. There are some updates to the exterior of the building as well. A lot of the, everything that's already there, the existing utilities are just being reused exactly as they are. The goal is to be in and be out, and give like, an updated feel to an already existing building that's there, and just add in some of like the things that like Starbucks needs. So things like the order menu, where that location is, it is, but a lot of it is still staying the same. And in addition to that, we went ahead and did a traffic statement. So I apologize that you guys got that earlier today. With, we submitted everything, and then like, once we heard about it, we put everything together. So we tried to turn it around as quickly as we could. But for that parking study, I might, or not parking study, that traffic statement, I might even bring that over to Bill a little bit more to talk a little. I might even bring that over to Bill a little bit more to talk a little bit more about that. But I also have that up, so I can go ahead and share that. Um with that, we were asked to do a basic traffic statement using the I T E um trip data. Uh so using generation and trip generation data, we went ahead and calculated basically just what like the demand on the site would be. And then I know this is Bill's first time uh with this kind of or a newer format as well. So Bill, I don't know if you can access the to turn off mute and then I can go ahead and share.
So he's on now, Caroline?
Yeah, he is on now. He said that he was uh on but by phone. So it is through a phone, not through Zoom. So that might be causing some of the issues.
I don't know if a host has to unmute him. Or because when you're calling in, he might be like muted by default.
Hmm.
Sure.
You know the the number telephone number?
Yes, I do have that.
He goes five oh eight, wasn't it?
The one five oh eight?
It looks like he's.
Oh, he's unmuted. He's unmuted.
Be some issues with it.
Okay, and what's what's Bill's last name?
Scully. S C U L L Y.
Oh, Mr. Scully, can you hear us and could you introduce yourself and your role if you're able?
I can go through some of the basics of it and then um I can also just like try to help answer questions or I can maybe give them a call on the side as well. Uh but for this, um the biggest information is just that they looked at the existing versus the proposed conditions and basically looked at like just the traffic data for um a lot of what is there. He said he can hear me, hear me, but he can't or he can hear us, but he can't. We can't hear him right now.
Thanks.
He just messaged me on on our team chat.
I just knew this wouldn't go perfect.
I know. I should. I think he'll also be the better person to do it because I designed the site uh civil, but traffic is definitely Bill's bread and butter.
Okay, while we're trying to sort that out, did you have more, Caroline, you want to speak to or?
I actually don't have too much more about the site. Um what I could do is just try to put this on. I might put my computer and do a speaker and then try to give him a call just so that I can add him into this. Um.
Thank you.
Let me see if all of this works. We're getting creative here. Sorry, everyone. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Hey, Bill, can can everyone hear this?
Uh give me a sec, Bill. I'm trying to put this all on speaker. Thank you, Bill, for joining in, actually. Uh I almost had it. Hey, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, yes.
Uh hey, Bill, can you try speaking and seeing if that works?
Speaking what?
Can you hear Bill as well in that or no?
Can I have him speak again?
Oh, everyone.
Very faintly.
Very faintly.
Hey, Bill, can you try one more time? It it sounds like it's very faint is the.
What's that? I hear an echo there.
Yeah, I I'm hearing garbled language. It's not very clear.
Hey, Bill, can you try one more time?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Not not effectively. We can't hear you saying.
It's not the best, but it is uh working a little bit.
Okay, so what is the?
So the the question right now is just a little bit more into the specifics of uh of the test or of the the statement that you guys did. So I went ahead and explained that it was done using the I T E trip data, but if you could kind of talk a little bit more about some of the specifics, and then I can also repeat back anything as were um if there's like anything that's a little bit more garbled.
Okay, so what the traffic?
Mrs. Scully, sorry. This is uh George Palumps, the chair. If you could just identify yourself and your role in the proposal, please. Thank you.
My name is Bill Scully. I'm a uh transportation engineer with Kim Lee Horn uh located in Wall fam, Mass. And uh we're on preparing the traffic statement that was submitted to Eric.
Thank you.
Um so um in preparing the traffic statement, uh we focus on the estimate of number of trips that the new Starbucks cafe would uh generate. We also compared it to um the former Friendly's restaurant um and calculate the difference of trips. Um we use the I T E or Institute of Transportation Engineers uh trip generation report uh which is based on data uh collected at similar type uses. So the Friendly's would be a uh high turnover sit down type of a restaurant. Uh Starbucks Cafe would be a a coffee shop with a drive through. And uh we also in the report, we talk about uh the phenomenon of uh pass by traffic. So typically on a coffee shop. A lot of the traffic going in and out of the site will be traffic that is already on the road. For example, up here on Route two heading to ninety one or staying on Route two, you're passing by um the site and you would pull off and get your cup of coffee or whatever else you wanted and then get back on the road and and continue on your way. Um the uh so in the in the statement, we talk about that. We talk about um uh comparing the cafe with the former use. And uh you end up in a situation of uh over the course of a typical day, the increase in net new trips taken into account pass by and and comparing one versus the other, uh the increase in traffic would be uh really less than a thousand trips per day um when you discount everything. And that would be half of that would be entering, half would be exit. In total, um as you'll see in the report, uh we're estimating uh twenty three hundred vehicle trips per day with half of them entering, half exiting. And the reason why it ends up being a net increase of less than a thousand would be your your accounting for the pass by traffic and you are uh taking into account uh what the Friendly's restaurant would have typically uh generated over the course of the day. Um the project is proposed and use the existing access drives to Robbins and come out of the signal. So there's no changes proposed for access, um no new driveways, et cetera. And as uh Caroline had mentioned, the uh storage length of the drive through is designed with a capacity of fourteen vehicles and um and that's ninety nine percent of the time more than sufficient to uh accommodate uh the the maximum queues that could be generated uh through the drive through. And I think uh that's it unless you have some other questions.
Thank you. Um did board members have questions they wanted to pose? And think about the traffic study at the moment? And again, I don't know how much board members had a chance to sort this document.
How current is any of the information?
Hey, Bill, how current is any of the information?
How current? Uh in terms of the estimate, the trip generation models are it's the eleventh edition, which is the most current like in the I T E database. So I mean, the eleventh edition was last year. It's updated electronically. Um so it's 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 very current.
Um I saw a question from someone who wrote it. I don't know if we accept that type of question through someone, Bob Williford. Um wrote it in the chat on Zoom.
Okay, I should I should.
Yeah.
Or you say that. Actually, it's not uh per open meeting law, zoo uh chat can't be used um during a public meeting. And the reason for that is it can't be seen by everybody. So um it can only be used to like someone to register that they want to speak for a public hearing or something like that. So um that isn't an option for making a substantive comment.
So maybe next time we can turn off the chat.
That would be or or any people to that. Sure. I I couldn't say it. So I didn't know. But did you have a whether based on that or your, did you have a question yourself?
Yeah, well, based on that and also I guess this is my own question, but um there's a current Massachusetts Department of Transportation project to reconstruct the intersection um at Robbins Road and Chlorine Road. Um and does the traffic study uh take that into account at all?
Um I mean, we're estimating trips generated from a uh typical Starbucks cafe. So whether the whatever improvements being done on the street isn't going to affect uh you know, the the traffic generation characteristic of the cafe. I can't. I I don't know specifically what the proposed project is. Um I imagine Robbins Road is is staying uh as a fourth leg into the intersections. So um you know, I I don't see any. Unless they were closing Robbins Road, which I can't do that because of the access to this site and the access to the adjacent site uh to come out of the signal. Um I would not see any any major effect of of that improvement on the on what we presented in the traffic statements.
Did that answer your question or?
I suppose so for now.
Okay.
Other biggest thing, Mr. Chairman, please, I might answer a question better. The it's on the tip and it's going to happen next year and it's going to improve the overall traffic flow overall for all businesses and for traffic traveling down that roadway.
Okay.
True.
Mohawk Trail, the improvements is going to improve the traffic flow overall in that area.
Yeah.
Amy or Chuck, do you have a question more? Uh did in the traffic study, uh Mr. Scully, did um the other adjacent project that's underway, did that come under some consideration?
Uh no, it didn't. So in this traffic statement, um but this is a saying, okay, here's how much traffic would be expected to be generated by this project. Um and taken into account, let's say, the former Friendly's, um but it's not not doing a traffic impact study around the area or taken into account the adjacent development that's uh planned for us.
What was the last part?
I didn't catch the last part, what you said. It doesn't take into account the future development, I think he said. Okay, thanks.
Um uh if I can make a statement, Miss.
Sure.
Please, they were the applicant was asked by the city through the Department of Planning Development to do a basic traffic impact statement using I T numbers, and that's what they did. Okay, um the the traffic impact uh report, you know, the thick reports you see is is uh if it's a mass DOT project and they go for an access permit, a study has to be done. Or if it's part of an M D R, major development review where they we have to do an increased traffic report. But for a site here going from a restaurant or a drive through to a restaurant or a drive through only had to do what I requested of them, which is what they provided.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Scully, the um uh within the report, um it does cite um some um surveys that were from uh about thirty years ago. I'm just trying to understand. That's in the I T E trip generation manual?
Okay, yeah, I I don't have the wording right in front of me, but so the the trip generation report from I T E. So this is a compilation of uh of data collected over the last thirty years. Uh some of the data collected in the last uh within the last five years, some within the last ten years. Um it goes through a lot of scrutiny and in fact, it started being um compiled in the seventies and and as we were preparing the ninth and tenth edition, we started to drop out. We did reviews of some of the former land uses, some of the data with those land uses and um and instead of carrying data for a particular use, even if it if we had four hundred studies, but it was over fifty years. Um we went for scrutiny and started deleting um deleting years of data, let's say, prior to nineteen ninety. I I in I'm just saying that as an example. Um I don't know if it's exactly nineteen ninety or not, but uh some of the old data, everything was reviewed as actions and new data was coming in and uh and adjustments were made in the trip generation report. So all of the data, um it could be, in fact, thirty years of data. Um and uh it's all been reviewed and determined whatever data is in there is is a um it needs the statistical um characteristics and and criteria to to be in there. Characteristics and and criteria to to be in there. Um. So that's that's what that thirty years likely refers to. And this, I mean, it's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of. Study within the uh subgeneration report for the different types of land uses. And as land uses change and or where we don't see certain land use, like we used to have a lot of uh, remember the video stores, the old blockbusters. You know, for a while, that was a land use in the in the report. That's not a land use in the report anymore because they don't exist. Um, but new land uses come on and then we we start to compile new new data for that, those particular uses.
Yeah, I was just trying to reconcile. Uh, there was a question earlier about how current. Uh, the information was and I was struck with the the survey years being so dated. So just trying to get some perspective on that. It it is a little hard to hear everything you're saying, but. Um, if you can answer to that, I would appreciate it.
Uh, I can repeat one of the things that he said. So as far as like the um. The information on how current it is, it uses the the most up to date information provided by I T E. So as far as how current it is, it's the most current data that can be provided publicly. Um, and then as far as like the data of the thirty year data, I would have to ask you specifically like which section you're talking about. Um, and then I can reiterate what Bill's talked about of like a lot of this information for like the standards are over thirty years old, which is. Most likely what it's referring to.
Yeah, this, the the report isn't paginated, so I can't, but it's the vehicle pass by rates by land use page I'm referring to.
So do you have a question related to the pass by?
I I was just trying to reconcile that you answered earlier about mo- you know, the information is current and. The seeming discrepancy of having these be surveys that are thirty years old. So I was just trying to clarify that.
Well, um, the trip generation report itself, you know, as I said, has hundreds of land uses and. Hundreds and hundreds of data. Um, so some of them, like single family subdivisions. Probably has thirty years of data in there uh because it's just so similar uh year to year that we've seen. Uh, in site to site. Um, we we don't have thirty years of uh. Of uh coffee shops and uh drive throughs, but but it's the latest edition of I T E. Trip generation, which the eleventh edition, I think is dated twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. So it's it's, we're always updating it. Um, data is being collected by traffic engineers all around the country and submitted and there's. There's people who just review data and determine whether or not it's valid enough to incorporate into the to the models. Uh, but the latest addition is up through, like I said, it's either twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, uh, the eleventh edition.
Can you answer your question, Mr. Chairman? Um, I'm I'm still a little uncertain because.
Thirty years old. The date is not thirty years old.
Yeah, I mean, I can I can speak to this as well. I have the tenth edition in the Department of Planning Development and it's fairly new. We've had the seventh edition for. A decade before that and finally upgraded to the tenth edition, which is outdated already and there's a new edition, the eleventh edition. That the eleventh edition takes the most current studies on the most recent land uses. Let's use marijuana dispensaries as an example. Thirty years ago, those didn't exist. Ten ten years ago, they didn't exist. So the new I T E eleventh edition had information on that new use. And the study's done on it. Now, you said the coffee shop probably has twenty years worth of data, different areas, similar throughout the whole country, put into that I T E. To come up with this statement that he has supplied the city with. So by using the eleventh edition of I T E, that is the most current data you can possibly have to figure out these types of numbers unless you do your own new study. Yourself. Right. Yeah, what I was try- what I was trying to clarify is. Um, you're saying something that's a new use that that would only be, you know, very recent data. And he was saying, you're not going to get a lot of, you know, video store, uh, you know, data. But, you know, eh eh, you know, sit down restaurant, drive through a restaurant or or, you know, coffee shop, I would think. That'd be more recent than thirty year olds data. That's what I was just trying to clarify. They they factor in that thirty years with new data. So now they have more than thirty years worth of data. Data they just don't throw away, but unless it's irrelevant to the you, the land use that they're in particular. So. If if it's still relevant, eh and in the new study, they add to it. I I'm just reading the dates that are in here, so. References that there could be many studies in that particular land use in the I T E trip generation manual. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, are there other board members have other? Um, questions or clarifications or comments regarding the traffic study from Mr. Scully? Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I would like to see a traffic study that incorporates the McDonald's, the proposed Aldi's as well as. Starbucks, because they're all going to be coming together at the same time. And that is, and that is going to be, as I see it, the negative. The only negative I see there right now is this. If Starbucks is very, very busy and I think it's going to be, just because of its popularity. Along with a very popular McDonald's and hopefully pop- uh popular Aldi's. That intersection is going to be greatly impacted, the to the negative. To the to the drivers who are coming down the Mohawk Trail or going up the Mohawk Trail or coming out of Robbins Road. Because there are some re- some uh residences on on Robbins Road too.
And and this sounds like some deliberation you're kind of entering into. I I appreciate that and. Do you have anything related to that you want to mention to Mr. Scully or it sounds like he has provided something. Based on what our planning department has asked or.
My understanding is that he was only asked to provide the impact that Starbucks would have.
Independent, yeah.
Independent, independent survey of that, not including. The uh the the businesses around that that are also going to impact. That's that's my take on it. I would like to see maybe another study.
Well, I just want to clarify, this is a traffic statement because we got it the M D R, we're not getting a traffic study.
Correct. If this was under M D R, we'd have the enhanced traffic study. Thank you.
And and so did Aldi's submit a traffic statement?
Yes.
And how many trips did they say they were gonna be adding?
I don't recall. I have to look up that before.
And and I think uh if you look into the Aldi's development, because it's it's a new development. They ended up going through the state environmental process and they're generating a lot more traffic. So there's probably a traffic study um that looks at that whole area. As as a result of the Aldi's product. This is just a redevelopment of the same same building, different restaurant, a little bit more traffic. But um it's not a brand new development.
Yes, he's correct that uh it's the new Aldi's. It have to do a traffic study for mass D O T as part of that and it's still going through that process. And so the 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 improvements happening on the Mohawk Trail have. The mass D O T has factored in all development except this store that is going from. Friendlies to Starbucks. Everything else has been factored in by D O T. The improvements have been done factoring all that in. Do board members have any uh questions for Zomshron? I wanted to ask um Zomshron if you could speak a bit to the the site. Particularly with regard to the stack, uh, my understanding from your materials is that you're. Eh eh, if you could help me with the flow on site, because I think the um. Uh, southernmost uh connection with Robbins Road, you were proposing be an exit only. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, so the reason that we were looking to do that was just to add a little bit of a better flow to the site. So one of the things that we looked at and then um ended up proposing is that right now both entrances are uh. Existing full movement access. So the page, the the more. Um, northern entrance, we are keeping existing full movement access, but basically because where they're exiting out of. After the drive through, they'll be exiting out of that uh. That northern site and I can also look at sharing my screen again if that would help. So just let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me go ahead and do that. So over here, this is is an existing full movement access and this is actually an existing full movement access as well. Over here, just to prevent, just to allow like a little bit of better flow. Um, a lot of the people that are going to be coming to this kind of store will either park and then go in for like a mobile order or for like. Work or whatever and then um or they'll be going through the drive through. So this is with um consideration of like the drive through itself of. Everyone's going to be coming in through here, pick up, order, pick up their food or whatever they're ordering and then they'll exit. And so it's to encourage. Exiting through that onto Robbins Road through the north side. And then that is uh. Just to allow for some better flow like through here.
So the northernmost uh connection with Robbins Road would still be both directions?
Yes, that is correct. So it is existing full movement access as well.
Thank you. And the the um. You were talking about a dedicated fourteen car stack. Uh, the fifteenth car would block that exit. Did you have any plan for uh preventing a car from sitting there and blocking other cars from exiting there?
Well, that's exactly why we actually designed it that way. So it's exit only, so no one can come in and then block in. So it's exit, it's exit only. We could look at um. And so because of that, we expect it to not be one that's used that often. In in the in that sort of case, they could go around and then just go out the existing full access. Uh, but the intention is that if there were, if it were to ever go past like fourteen cars, is that there wouldn't. Um, it would force them to go through like this sort of route. Uh, again, we never usually see it any more than like fourteen cars, but there are a lot of cities and that want that taken into consideration. So that's why we provided that. So it's more about making sure that if it were to ever. If it was like free Starbucks Day and like it was a longer stack, that it would never go out into Robbins Road. It would always just continue through here and provide like an extra. Five or six cars in the parking lot instead.
I'm thinking how sometimes uh intersections have signage, please don't block the intersection, you know, for a side road or something like that.
We do have that too. So right here and then this G I is just thank you, exit only. So this is the signage right here. Um, we don't have one of just like, don't block this entrance or this exit, uh, but that's something that's easy that could be added as well.
To to request the fifteenth car to wait before blocking that you're talking about.
Correct.
Thank you. And could you indicate where the uh handicap parking is? Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
And then, yes, so the goal is to continue to use the existing handicap spaces that are already out there. So there, all of the handicap is. Right over here as well as some access over here.
So folks who park in the ones nearer to Mohawk Trail would be crossing in front of the um cars exiting from the drive through.
Yes, as per the existing condition.
Oh, and I see the, oh, is that crosswalk? Is that um uh handicap accessible?
Um, we don't have existing survey out there, but as of right now, it looks pretty flat.
Because that is a crosswalk, right? Those dark black lines.
Yes, that is a crosswalk.
Do board members have any other questions for the applicants? Uh, maybe we could move on, Eric, to um reports from departments. We received uh review comments from the Health Department, Fire Protection Officer, Engineering, Superintendent, Department of Planning Development. All had no issues with our comments with this project. Um, the Health Department did leave a bunch of handouts, but no one's here physically. So I'll have to send these to you. Um, it's their checklist for new food establishments and uh other paperwork that. Relevant to that, so I I will get you that. But that's all the review comments from city departments and we received several comments from the public. At uh. This point did um. Board members want to hear comments from the public? I know we had some who were emailed in and I know some people here were interested in speaking. It's not a public hearing. But um. Okay.
I have no objection.
Okay, so um. Maybe we could start with the ones who were, I don't know if anyone's here who uh emailed in, so we can maybe start with folks who are here. Yeah, if anyone could just again come up to the chair here, just so it will be heard well by people who were, and if you could. Still give your name and address, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Steve Feiner, Brenell Street.
And you did write.
I did, yes, we got it. So I'm going to begin by saying I think this is a lunatic idea. I don't know if this is the place to render my bias. Um, but part of this is based upon issues about the quality of life of people who live here and I'm. I think extremely concerned about what it will be when. Uh, people who are already disgruntled, trying to navigate going around the rotary to travel west are having to deal with. Other north-south travelers who are in a hurry to get somewhere. It just feels to me like the congestion is going to be frightening and maybe, Eric, you have some idea about. What the long range view of the improvement of the highway will result in um in terms of. Trying to conceive of these three major developments in one spot, major commercial, that all means one spot will result in. Maybe alleviated by this highway development, but I I have a hard time envisioning. People are going to have an easy time going east-west off that rotary, especially in light of the fact that. Many people will travel from out of state, they're going on vacation, whatever they're doing, they're always, they seem to be always in a hurry. And they don't have much patience and my experience of living here is most of us don't behave like that. So I see this as being a serious deterioration of the quality of life of of our living here. That's first point. Second point, I would really appreciate envisioning a time when we could actually have a big. Comprehensive study of what the net effect of these three major commercial spots will be on that intersection. Because as I was listening tonight, I was thinking to myself. If all of us examine where we live and where we've traveled in, say, Rattleboro, Pittsfield, North Hampton. Amherst, down to Holio, I can't think of any single major intersection that has as little space. As this is going to have where Robbins Road is. Can you even noticing, for example, where the new Aldi's is on King Street in North Hampton, which is sort of difficult to get to if you're in a vehicle. It still has space for that traffic light intersection where you can pause in the lane and you can turn off and get there fairly easily without being hurried by. Traffic on your right. I can't see that happening here. So for those reasons, I think this is a terrible idea. And I think I'd like to be persuaded with benefit of maybe a study that could prove to me that it will be. Workable for people who live here as well as people who are traveling from out of state off the highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we're not, you can come up, just.
I didn't write anything. I'm just coming up.
That's fine, yes. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Judith Maloney. I lived in, I live in Greenfield. I've lived in Greenfield for six years, before I lived in Colrain for forty-two years. Um, to me, Greenfield, what we have in Greenfield is like, what do we have in Greenfield? Which is strong. We are, we are, what's, what's it called? We're the the center of Franklin County, we're the the seat of Franklin County or whatever it's called. Um. So. We are the threshold. Off the highway, we are the threshold to going west on two, which you can go all the way west. You can go across the the United States on two. Okay, so besides that. It is the threshold going north and south. It's and and where 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 Friendly's is, which would be Starbucks. Is within, within feet of the turn there, as in with, within feet of the. The circle. And one of our, one of the powers we have in Greenfield is that we are. We are on the threshold going west, we are on the threshold going east. And actually, the highway makes it so we're north or south. We're, we're, we're a very busy. Important threshold that we are, we are saying that the people in this area will have to deal with the fact that it. That that threshold is being, is being blocked and and squeezed. And that's what I want, that's what I want you guys to think about. Because I'm not sure that you're, you're putting that into the plans. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have some succinct comments they want to share?
Hello, my name is Patty O'Neill. I am, I live in Precinct One. And I just recently learned of this Starbucks that was going to be replacing um Friendly's. Um, and I was curious, is it, is it too late to stop this? Or is this pretty much underway and happening?
I think this is such a, a great thing, and I thank you for coming, and I think sometimes. People think when we sit on the planning board that we have the the power to say, well, I'd like for there to be a target. Or I'd like for there to be a Starbucks or not a Starbucks, and we actually are here to just. Look at the zoning, the existing zoning and have a discussion, and we don't actually have any wiggle room in terms of. Um, like there are ways that you can stop development. You're sitting next to Al Norman. Probably one of the most famous national activists who stops development. And what I love about this community is that we all live together. And um. I think this is a great moment, you know, for everybody to be thinking about like, what do I want this town to look like? What are the, what are the existing laws? How do you stop things? But basically, we are just looking at a proposal from a major corporation. To purchase a building from another major corporation and place their um coffee shop there.
And a little, little more formal um statement of what you're you're saying, Amy, is that this is a site plan review. So within the zoning ordinance, there are certain um things we can have input about a site plan review as compared with a special permit. As Eric was saying, a special permit gives the planning board much more leverage to have influence on a project or require more information.
So is there another time where um, I guess deciding or like. Asking whether there is any community, community input into what kinds of businesses come? Um, and like what standards we want to have for them? Is there another time to talk about those?
Uh, good question. I don't know if I have an easy answer, uh, but um. Uh, it's, it's all comes down to zoning, and there is actually. As we were talking about earlier, and we're going to be deliberating about later, there's a proposed amendment to the zoning that would. It could make it that more projects would have to be come under major development review, which has a higher standard. So that's how we, by adjusting the zoning ordinance, that's a way we can, people can, and I, I, I know it's. It's not project specific, it's, it's part of the system of adjusting that. So that's something that has been recently proposed, re-proposed, and we're. Going to be making a recommendation a bit later about that. So.
Well, I guess, yeah, I'm, maybe this isn't the time to say it, but um Starbucks. Uh, and McDonald's are under a boycott campaign for their labor practices and and um. Um, stances against Palestine. Aldi's has been associated with prison labor to produce their products, and I know that um. Green, they update to the master plan, greenfielders are giving input that um. They want less chains and more like greenfield identity, and so there's a number of reasons um. Why I I'm disappointed to see that all of these um businesses are are coming here, but I guess I'll try to talk about it later.
Thanks, and um, as as you mentioned, that the adjustment to the master plan is another opportunity for public input um. For a site plan review, those factors you mentioned, important as they are, in a lot of circumstances, aren't something we can take into consideration. On our, our decision making, but the next meeting of the, the uh review of the uh update of the master plan is actually on Monday, so. Thanks. Anybody else? Yeah, welcome.
I want to thank Eric for sending you all a comment that I wrote this afternoon. I, as Eric will tell you. I was bothering him almost daily about where's the traffic study, where's the traffic study? I, I'm sorry for that, but I'm not used to people getting a traffic study the day of the hearing. Uh, I think that I would have rather postponed this hearing to give people an opportunity to really. Review this and understand it, because I, I agree with the your vice chairman Kenny is that I, I think this is. The way we, the way we do traffic studies and look at them is is seriously flawed, because. And common sense tells you, as, as you said, that if you, that traffic is like a layer cake. If you, you start off, let's say with. Um, a, a big Y and a Staples on one side, and then you add the Home Depot on the other side. And then you, you add a, an Aldi's, and then you add a Starbucks, et cetera, you, and you, you have a. A staple on with the big Y. You're layering on layer after layer of traffic volume. But we never, as, as people come before you, you see them in, in a one dimensional uh layer of. This is what we were asked to do. We, we pulled out an I T E manual, looked at the I T E manual. And looked at the pass by, uh, using thirty-year-old data. Honestly, from form, from several uh southern states. And and say that this is, this is adequate for us telling you what's going to happen out there. You all. You all remember, most of you remember the, back in August, when you were looking at the uh, the plan uh for all these. You were talking about level of service, which from a consumer's perspective, from the driver's perspective, what they really care about. Is what is the LOS at this intersection? Am I going to be here for fifty-two, fifty-three seconds waiting for the lights to change? That's what traffic engineers are most concerned about. This kind of superficial data of, of looking at, looking at a. Uh, a made up number, not a made up number, but it's, it's, it's a generic number for a, a coffee shop with a drive through. Or a generic number for a, a sit-down, high-volume sit-down restaurant. These are all numbers that the traffic engineers have put into a manual. To come up with a, a number that they can use to say, okay, this project, the, the. The most interesting number for me was the, the two thousand one hundred and thirty number, which was the, the average daily trip number. And that, and basically why that's interesting is here we are again with another development that comes in under the three thousand, so it won't even be looked at. And the, the, the kind of stuff that you want to know won't even be looked at. And that, that number actually is, is just about the same level as the Aldi's. Because the Aldi's was two thousand one hundred and sixty, these guys are two thousand one hundred and thirty. Uh, so you've got, um, when you were doing Aldi's, you didn't know that seven months later, you were going to have another applicant come in and say. Hey, we're going to do about the same volume that Aldi's did. Aldi's went, gave you a lot of data about LOS. And in fact, had a, had a level of service D uh in one afternoon and, and at Robbins Road. So that was not, that was not particularly uh encouraging, but, you know, nevertheless, now you've got another one. In two months, Robar that owns the Big Y Plaza, because by the way, um, Starbucks will not own this building, they, they will be tenants. This is still owned by a Miami-based developer, all these out-of-state developers. So in will come uh Robar six or seven months from now with a plan for how to rent up the fifteen thousand square feet next to Big Y. And you're going to be looking at another one. And what I, what I would want as a planning board member is I want to know, wait a minute. The question that Mr. Kenny asked is, where are we now in terms of total, total uh traffic that's going to have to squeeze through that intersection? Um, with, with a, with a, a rotary backing behind it, not after a very short uh exit ramp. What's going to happen? We need to know all of the layers at one time, not just what they're telling you tonight. And I don't see even how the relevance of approving a plan when you don't know that. So that leads me to my, my conclusion, which is that um, I have urged you, and I've tried, I try to do it in a supportive way. I'm not trying to be critical of, of what the planning board does or doesn't do about this, but um, in my opinion. Um, it, it's, it's really uh, uh, one of the, one of the tools you have in your arsenal. Is that you can ask for uh an outside consultant. Uh, to do, to do an analysis of not just the, the data here, the, the, the issue of the I T E manual, that's not really relevant, but. I'd like, I'd like an independent consultant to, to look at uh Starbucks, for example, they have over sixteen thousand stores. Can't they produce, can't these folks tonight, can't they produce for you one, two, or three examples? Of, of Starbucks uh restaurants, Starbucks coffee shops, which are located near an interstate. You know how dramatic the numbers would change from a Starbucks located in downtown Greenfield. I mean, it's like night and day. So you're getting, you're getting numbers that, as far as I know, I don't know where these. These other studies that, the studies that they looked at from Florida and, and so forth. We don't know where they're located, we don't know what kind of artery they were nearby. This, this project is not a Greenfields project, it's not a Greenfield retail, it's a Route ninety-one retail. It's the kind of retail that will live or die based on north-south traffic. It's not going to, it's not going to make it on, on Greenfield-only uh traffic from, uh, from inside the town. And I hope not, because we already have great, great coffee roasters. But you really, you really have the resource to be able to hire an outside consultant at the expense of the developer. And why we don't use that, we should. This is the kind of information that we need. I really, I really can't fathom how you can. Based on half of the testimony, which the public couldn't even hear, and, 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 you know. These uh manual numbers completely, give us real numbers from Starbucks. Let's take a look at that, and let's take a look at your methodology on pass-by trips. Because they're using, remember, they're using pass-by trips only to show you peak hour AM, peak hour PM, peak hour Saturday. They're not telling you anything about how that actually affects the buildup, the layered buildup of, of the Staples traffic and the Big Y traffic. And the Home Depot traffic, and the Taco Bell traffic and the McDonald's traffic. You know, this, this is not just about that one thin layer, what they're talking about. So I really, I really think you don't have adequate information to do much with, and I really also think it's an argument. For uh having a major development review uh done at two thousand. Because you, then you would have been able to get much better answers from these people, because you, if you don't know level of service up or down. You really know very little about what they're doing here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Who else who is present in person? This, is there anybody on um uh attending virtually who wanted to comment? On this. Proposal. And uh, we did have some other uh comments from folks that weren't here to add what they were saying. Some of these have come in just today as well, um. We've been tired of all these, but um. One person was talking about. Supporting accessibility um aspects of the. Project, one person is saying they were supporting it, uh potential or occasional traffic backups, seeing the small price. In town hovering on life support, full speed ahead. Um, another person was expressing concern about the amount of traffic. Puts in the context of the Aldi's project as well. Jackson also expressed concern about um the traffic issues. And the other context of the others. And we got one very detailed. Um, comment this afternoon about the. Was thrilled to see Starbucks landscaping plan, which we haven't really gotten into. Uh, the suggested plan is to be a great improvement to the property presently occupied by Friendly's, and then uh. They were offered detailed uh comments, suggestions about uh biodiversity, and I don't. Uh, building up native habitat. I don't know if board members had a chance to see that, because it did just come in today.
I did not see that coming.
Came in uh like five, so it was. Turned out a copy in deep to George's for the files.
Oh, okay, very detailed.
Yeah, it's from Nancy Hazard, and she has some suggestions on uh. Replacing trees, they're proposing shrubs and grasses with more native species.
Certainly, that's something board members could speak to if they wanted. Because we didn't get into that aspect of the proposal.
Are you suggesting a discussion on that topic now?
No, I'm saying we have the proponents here, and we hadn't talked about that aspect of it. So if anyone wanted to approach that. Uh, this would be the time to do it.
Or so Caroline, do you think you could talk about the landscaping plan?
Sure, I can do that. Um. I'll go ahead and share that. Let me know if you can see it.
Yes.
Basically, this is the, this is the landscaping plan, so a lot of this is uh proposed for basically where. Um, green area is or wherever there is previous to go ahead and add some additional shading. Um, and shrubbery that goes along with uh the, the standards that Starbucks usually goes along with. Um, some of them are about just like protecting existing trees or adding some new ones in or um where they are, but a lot of the new development. For the landscaping area is just adding around some shading through like the new landscaped areas, the new patio and updates to the patio. And then areas around that like aren't being used to provide just a little bit of extra aesthetics. And then also some additional shading and some uh protection from the heat. And yeah, so I can't speak too much on like the biodiversity or the, the naturals for that. Um, but on that, I can say that like these, this is the list of what is on there. So all of that is included as part of the submittal of what is being provided, um. And if there are any comments, then we can definitely take all of that into note, too.
Can, can you indicate um what proportion of those are native?
Off the top of my head, I would have to look into that and get back with that information.
Nancy's comment goes into that. Yeah.
And if you wanted to read any of it, Sarah, that would be.
I don't have it in front of me, but I, I will say that I looked up um some of these. And the thornless honey locust is not native. The Japanese tree lilac is listed as having invasive tendencies and is also not native. Um, but Nancy is very knowledgeable, and her comment has suggested alternative. Um, but Nancy is very knowledgeable and her comment has suggested alternatives and things like that.
Do you want to, you see her comments or you did?
Oh, sure, I would love it. Yeah, thank you.
Or any further, Sarah, any further specifics you wanted to share or do you want to go over a little bit further? For anyone else on the board?
Well, should I, how detailed should we get? Should I read some of Nancy's?
If there's parts of it that you want to uh, offer as a suggestion, sure.
Um, okay, so for the Japanese tree lilac, Nancy suggested a few alternatives that are native to this area. American hornbeam, American oak hornbeam, eastern redwood and sour, eastern red bud and sour wood. Um, and as for the shrubs, apparently boxwoods are not native to our area. So those were some suggestions.
Um, so I was gonna suggest that uh, I could review the, again, we're doing a site plan review and could review the um, official for the board and official for the public and review the approval guidelines. Number one is provision for integrating the project into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape by minimizing use of wetlands, steep slopes and hilltops, protecting visual amenities and scenic views, preserving unique natural or historical features, minimizing tree vegetation or soil removal, and minimizing grade changes. Number two, the use of landscaping to establish buffers between incompatible land uses and to screen unsightly features. Number three, provision of open space and pedestrian amenities available to the public. Number four, the arrangement of access points, service roads, driveways, parking areas, lighting and pedestrian walkways in a manner to maximize the convenience and safety of pedestrian and vehicular movement within the site in relation to adjacent ways. Number five, ease of access, travel and onsite movement, fire and police equipment and other emergency services for public safety. Number six, provision for underground placement of utilities. Number seven, provisions for surface runoff and drainage which protects the site and adjacent properties from erosion, maximizes groundwater recharge through low-impact development stormwater techniques, and prevents the collection of surface runoff on paved surfaces which may obstruct pedestrian or vehicular flow. Number eight, the sighting of building structures and open spaces to permit maximum use of passive solar energy, to permit maximum protection from adverse impacts of winds, vapors or other emissions, shadows and noise, and to provide for adequate light, air and circulation. Number nine, protection of historic features and design which does not distract from properties in the area. Number ten, measures to pre, prevent pollution of surface or groundwater and to prevent increased flooding. And number eleven, compliance with the parking, loading dimensional performance standards and all other sections of this ordinance. Um, I did wanna uh, ask Caroline about um, if there's, I didn't notice that there were changes to the um, uh, to the drainage, is that accurate or?
Uh, the site, um, we're actually not proposing to uh, mess with utilities at all because the majority of the building is staying the same, they're actually gonna reuse the existing utilities that are already there um, to prevent cutting in to the asphalt. And then so for the drainage, it's uh, per the, the checklist, we are continuing on with the existing drainage of how it is already working and proposing to keep all of that.
Thank you. And so those are the, the eleven um, guidelines that we're obliged to uh, adhere to. Um, I know the number four is uh, talks about um, safety of vehicular movement within the site and in relation to adjacent ways, and that's from a traffic point of view. Uh, and I, I know um, in relation to what you were saying, Chuck, um, it, it, it feels like a bit of a conundrum in that what we would want is a holistic assessment of this area, you know, and all these projects. And yet in front of us, we have a singular project uh, which is not a major development review. It's not a, it's not a special permit, it's a site plan review. And so what um, are, are options to address those concerns through this process? And so interesting hearing board members' thoughts.
I mean, we asked about the drainage, bike racks, the lighting. They provided us with a traffic statement, we can't ask them for a traffic study. So what, what is left?
Well, uh, uh, that, that's my, that's the thing I'm struggling with a bit is about the traffic study because the idea you were raising, and is that something we have the option to do within this uh, process? And um, I, I also know, I'll just say for myself, as I, as I prefaced um, earlier, it was um, to be able to do our job, my, my, adhere to my responsibility, it's, it's hard to get data uh, so shortly before you're required to make a decision. Um, so uh, that, that, that feels problematic. I don't know what the reasons were that it got delayed so long, but uh, uh, it, it feels like it put me as one board member at a disadvantage for making a fully informed decision. So I, I don't know, no one else had commented, I don't know if you had a chance to, you know, during your day today to um, absorb that and assess that information uh, fully or if you feel like you have sufficient information now, so. Putting that question out there.
No, I, I mean, I think that's fair. Do we have the option to ask them for a tr, a traffic statement that's more relevant? Um, with comparable properties, I mean Starbucks has so many different properties. I'm imagining they could provide us with a traffic statement that would be relevant to the crossroads of major interstates.
Eric, you seem, you seem like you have a comment.
Next question from the board, um, so the study, I mean, the level of service, what, what would be, would you require them to do mitigation and change intersections and, and do physical improvements as a result of the study? Or is it just a study for you to read, oh, okay, this is gonna come up? In a special permit or MDR application, you, you request a full study and, and you'd require mitigation as part of the approval. Okay, in this case here, this is a restaurant, it's, it's a by right use because it's, it's a restaurant going to a restaurant with a traffic, so by, by right use. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say is that the best traffic reviewers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is mass DOT. And they're looking at this interception and they have paid access permit in from Aldi's and every other development that's gone through there, the hotel that would have gone in. And, and so they're the ones gonna say you must do this, these improvements if you want your access permit. So they are the premier reviewers in the state for mitigation and for determining what the traffic needs are. They're, they're gonna do much better job than we could, it's mass DOT and they're very thorough. Um, so I just wanted to hopefully alleviate some of the board's concerns about traffic because DOT is on it.
And you're saying, admitting, you're saying in relation to the Aldi's?
And every other development that's, that's gone before Aldi's. This is a new, but this is a by right use, uh, using an existing site, it's not a brand-new site being developed and it's not a special permit, so that I would recommend against peer review and I recommend against a full traffic study for this applicant.
Yeah, that's my conundrum, is that, you know, this is a, a shift of the, the use, the current use that already exists as compared to a new development.
Exactly.
Like the Aldi's.
Um, the reason that they didn't have to get a report from, uh, do a report, because it's, it's not off of their state road. Mohawk Trail is a state road, this is off Robbins Road. So they didn't have to go through DOT.
I'm confused about the DOT's role, could you explain that more?
Yeah, every single time that somebody wants to open up a business on a state road, mass DOT requires a traffic study, detailed traffic study that they review and they require mitigation. Like you must do this dedicated left turn lane or right turn lane, you must add a traffic light here or, or do things to mitigate the traffic impacts. That's DOT's role on all state roads, Mohawk Trail is a state road. So uh, they're very thorough in their reviews too, because I've attended some of their sessions and very thorough. So that's how DOT is involved. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does, I think, but DOT is not involved in this project or McDonald's or Aldi's, is that correct?
No, they're, they are involved in all these because the entryway into Aldi's is off Mohawk Trail.
I see, thank you.
And same thing with McDonald's. So if they did a major expansion McDonald's, which they already exist, they can't expand, they, they would have to do a traffic report for DOT.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, other members on the board, I, I, I know to some extent, um, I, I'm trying to be, uh, certainly, um, I always try to be respectful of applicants and, and to uh, uh, as members of the public say, not be anti-business or something like that. And yet I also wanna respect the process and uh, I, I have felt uh, today a, a bit of a disadvantage about this study. So in some ways, I'm inclined to uh, consider continuing this process so that myself and other board members, if they feel a need, it's up to the board, of course, um, uh, you know, would, would have a chance to think these issues through, ask other questions I might have of Eric or anything else. Just to get some more um, you know, clarity and assuredness about the decision uh, people are making. But I don't wanna, I, I think we're trying to not overstep beyond what we can do based on the current ordinance, which doesn't call for a major development review uh, or, or a special permit. So don't wanna, don't wanna um, uh, you know, be uh, don't wanna disadvantage this applicant based on other factors, but also wanna give a, do consideration and have a chance, more chance to absorb the um, the uh, information. So Eric, let me ask you, just from a procedural point of view, um, uh, we could continue this till next month potentially?
Yes, you could. If you need more time to review the traffic statement, then yes, you most certainly could.
Open to board reaction to that or thoughts or opinion? Or the board may wanna proceed to decide tonight? We, we, sorry, we can't have whispering, we do need the public to hear everything we're saying.
Sarah, I'll make a motion to continue for till the next. So we can look at this, and I think we have new board members coming on too, which may give rise to more questions.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all members in favor of, of continuing this next month at the next meeting? Thank you. Thank you, uh, Caroline and I don't know if Mr., um, it's always so there, thank you.
Thanks everyone and thanks for bearing with us with the technical issues.
And our next meeting would be
First third, April, yeah, April, which, anybody have a calendar?
This is there, you know, you have one of the
April fourth.
April, April fourth. Okay.
April fourth, sixteenth.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Take care. Hey, next on the agenda is our deliberation on the uh, zoning, um, uh, proposed zoning amendments, again, there are six, five which were initiated or actually re-initiated by the planning board and one initiated by a citizen petition. Again, regularly should go through these one at a time. So as far as the uh, farm poultry definition being amended, is there a motion? About a recommendation to the city council?
I move that we forward our recommendation about the zoning change as regards poultry.
I assume you mean positive recommendation?
Second.
Thank you, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. On regarding the uh, definition of uh, three-family dwelling, a motion to the center of recommendation?
Somewhat.
Second.
Positive recommendation, okay, very good, discussion, none, all in favor, aye, unanimous. Uh, regard to the marijuana establishments, recommended amendments, motion to board a recommendation to the council?
Positive, somewhat.
All right, thank you, positive recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye, unanimous. Uh, regarding sign regulations amendment.
I move we forward a positive recommendation as regards the sign amendment.
Thank you. There's a second, uh, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye. Uh, the water supply protection district, I know people were really hanging on going from Arabic to Roman numerals, yeah, so okay, um, and is there a motion?
I'll make a positive motion.
Thank you, there's a second.
Second.
Thank you, and any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And lastly, the uh, major development review, uh, which would change the um, uh, trigger uh, vehicle trips from three thousand to two thousand. Is there a motion to make a recommendation to the council on that?
Somewhat.
Is that a positive recommendation? Thank you.
Second.
All right, discussion. I'll offer that um, when um, I was on the planning board when this arrangement um, happened, uh, and I remember very clearly our deliberation about it. The planning board sent a four-to-one uh, recommendation against uh, making that change. Um, and I know I commented at the time uh, that it was good politics but poor planning. And uh, we have actually had on the uh, planning board in the intervening years, we were a few times had a um, uh, some discussion of, you know, uh, maybe initiating reverting back to the original uh, major development review standards, which as, has been referenced, were made kind of randomly. Um, and it was, it was striking me because at the time, I think the French king, because it's so specific, that got a lot of public attention, but I don't think a lot of members of the public understood what the, the weakening of the major development review, um, what impact that could have. And uh, so I know I was extremely troubled at the time by that and had, was, was hardened when Council Elmer forwarded that and then it came back through citizen petition. So um, I, I, I think this is a very good, I also would have reverted back to the, what had been the, the latest one thousand uh, trips, but we can't, you know, uh, I don't think that could be changed, right Eric, that, that, that would be substantive change, so it couldn't be done without being
Without starting the process.
Yeah, yeah, um, so um, that, that's what I had to say about that, it's a long time coming from my perspective. Any other comments? Any other comments? None. All in favor of the positive recommendation? Aye, unanimous. The next item is an approval not required. For members of the public attending, this is a unusual provision in Massachusetts. Yes, so in law, where someone's adjusting some land, exchange of land, and it has to go through this process where we can't, as long as it meets certain criteria, we can't deny it, but we just, we do have to endorse it. I don't know if you want to give any more background on that, Eric?
I'm not in the process. I've just found the actual A and R plan itself. So there's an existing house lot at 175 Cleveland Street. They want to break that into two lots. There's an existing house on 175 Cleveland Street. The setbacks are met and land in frontage areas have been met. Two criteria for approval of an A and R plan is that it must meet the frontage requirement of the district in which it's located. And it must have practical access is the wording. So there can't be a cliff or a wetland or something preventing you from accessing that land off the frontage.
And frontage is the length of base of the property on the road.
On a public road.
Yeah. Okay, and this meets those criteria?
Yes, sir.
And they're not required to tell us why they're doing it or, right? It's just, it's just.
Irrelevant. They do it.
Okay, and so there's just parcelas being purchased off from that other property for the houses?
That's correct.
Are there any, what have any clarifying questions, Eric? Is there a motion to endorse the same R?
I moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
A positive endorsement.
And is there an adjacent motion to have me sign it or not everybody on the planning board has to sign it?
I move that we authorize chairperson to want us to sign on the behalf of the entire planning board.
Second.
Oh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is board and staff reports. I wanted to mention, as I referenced earlier, that the Conway School, and one thing I wanted to apologize for at the last meeting, when I was reading the minutes, I saw that the board had asked, because the, the, the master plan is officially a planning board document. And so we have recruited folks from, or Conway School has agreed to provide a process of trying to update a couple of the chapters. And so I, I'm on the master plan implementation committee and had reported back to the board last time about this process. And there had been a first public input meeting and there was a PowerPoint. And the minutes said you guys would get the PowerPoint, but I don't think that's, I know I emailed you today, Eric, about that. I don't think I followed up on that, so.
Received that.
You did receive it.
Yes, I did.
Today, after your prompting.
Oh. Belated, but yes.
Yeah, they had to actually delete a few images that, that they couldn't use. They didn't feel good.
Oh, okay.
So they removed them. That's why it took a while to get it.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, thank you for following up on that. And the next session is Monday from 6:00 to 7:30, and it's only virtual, right?
Zoom only.
So, so, so you just go to the website calendar and you'd have the Zoom link there?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other reports? Anything from the?
Yes, I have something. I'm going to be attending the Citizen Planners Conference on the 16th of March, I believe, and this is. So I'm excited to learn more about everything we're doing.
And this is a training program that's offered by Citizen Planner. Can you say a little bit about what that is just for?
It's Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. It's an organization in the state that provides training for land use boards, like ZBAs, planning boards and others. A lot of different sessions. They give sessions on how to do master plans, how to update zoning, how to properly run a meeting, open meeting law, many things on their course offerings. That's, it's a great organization for a board.
Yeah, yeah. Site plan review.
Site plan review, special permits, vested rights, grandfathering, all that.
Yeah, they're great for training, so excellent. And anything from the CPA?
We are still, I think we're in the process of scoring the projects airing to discuss and agree.
CPC, I should say.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the Community Preservation Committee, which Amy is the planning board representative. And we'll have, as you were alluding to, we'll have a couple new members would be in place, Eric, at the next meeting?
I will confirm that, but I believe so.
Okay, there was something from Jeff Salzner about, and I wanted to get your input about that. He had some project or something like that he needed to get.
He had some project that would be a conflict.
A central conflict and he was directing with the ethics.
Exactly. So he wants to finish that, which is soon, and then he'll be on the board.
Okay.
So I think he'll be available for April.
Okay, great.
Is there another member or is Jeff the only?
No, no, there is.
There's another member as well, and his name is Skigman.
Sorry.
Two new members as of April.
Was it Peter McGarver?
Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you. And then you'll be stepping down again? Alternate. Any other comments before we, next meeting date is April 4th? Yeah, I'm here and there. Okay, is there a, what's your agenda?
Second.
Assume no discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you, folks, on Zoom.